October 27.
She was a real digger. She wanted to get some things on something. And I was speaking to Knoxville Chamber and I said, we had a multi-communities. It was put in the paper as a multicultural leadership.
That's different.
That's different.
Emily?
If I'm George, who are you?
Go ahead, Emily. Oh, I know, right? No, don't call me.
Don't call you George.
No, don't call me.
All right, it is nine o'clock. We'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Grandin, roll call please.
Keisha Joner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
You're muted, Steve.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda.
Make motion to reapprove today's agenda.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Joner?
Aye.
Jake, any communications received?
No, sir.
On the public comments, it's the portion of our agenda the public can speak on, items not listed on this morning's agenda. Board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Make motion to reapprove today's consent agenda.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Joner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. First item for business is discussion, potential action on a regional broadband initiative proposal. You have it in your packet. Steve, you got it? I hope you got it?
Yes.
Got it? Okay, good. From Greater Des Moines Partnership, Carla's district.
It's actually Mike. Mike is on.
Oh, is Mike on? Okay.
Hi, I am. Good morning.
Good morning. So, Mike, what do we have here?
Well, would I be able to share my screen with you this morning?
I don't know. Who's our technological person? I think so. Yeah. Emily says yes.
Okay, it says the host is disabled by connection, by sharing, so.
The answer may be no. All right, Mike. Whoever's. Go ahead and try, Mike.
Whoever's running. Yeah, whoever's running it. Oh, there we go. Yay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And we can begin. Well, thank you all for taking a few minutes and letting me speak to you this morning. The reason we're here to talk to you is about a regional initiative to look deeper into what we really have for broadband in our 10-county area. The fundamental challenge is here. The FCC's studies and maps claim that we are between 90% and 100% covered. The problem is this is flawed data. The way they did the data was if any one person in the census tract had good broadband, then automatically everyone has good broadband. A study done by Microsoft, by their philanthropic group, shows that if you look at utilization, in other words, how many of our citizens are actually using broadband, you'll see that across all counties, it's 35%. And in fact, Chickasaw is as low as 14. So, the disparity is very, very wide. And primarily, the problem is in our rural areas. Larger cities have good to better broadband. It depends on the age of their infrastructure. But for any of us who've lived out in the country, I have a friend who lives on the wrong side of the road and simply cannot get any kind of cable connection whatsoever. So, that's really why we're here. If you look at our 10-county area, this compares the FCC's numbers in the second column to the utilization number in the third column, and you can see quite a disparity. So, if we look at Marion County this morning, 87% or 88% is pretty much what the FCC says that the county has, when in fact, if we look at utilization, it's under 27%. That is a huge, huge disparity. I don't, I think we have all had the discussions of why broadband is critical, so I think we can leave that alone. It is even worse for minorities. And a recent study that was done by NTIA shows that if you are Hispanic or black, it is likely that you're running as many as 10 points lower in availability. So, and in utilization. So, this is a huge problem for our citizens. Some good news that we've discovered recently is the FCC did award a contract last year from their Connect America Fund for about $280 million. And part of that money covers 85 counties, including yours. And this money is to go to a fixed wireless system, fixed wireless internet system, using much newer technology than some of the old ones you're familiar with. For any of us who've used a fixed wireless system from 10 years ago, they were pretty bad. The new ones actually can deliver 100 megabit down, 10 up quite easily, and at a relatively reasonable price. So, we are working with NextLink, who is out of Texas, to roll the system out across the nine counties listed here. The only county in our 10-county area not covered is obviously Polk. NextLink actually acquired an Iowa company called Extreme Error and Cushing in September, and they've been actively reaching out to the smaller towns starting this month. So, this is going on no matter what the study holds. This is one solution. Please understand that our goal in doing this regional study and action plan is to provide all of our citizens multiple options for broadband. Once you have multiple options, you have competition. You bring in competition, prices get reasonable. Second opportunity that is a little farther, and I don't mean this as a pun, but out there, is a satellite system called Starlink. This is one of Elon Musk's many projects. This system is, has 800 satellites in orbit now. It'll get up to 8,000. The beta for this is going on now. It's a very competitive price. So, this is for the people that are in such a remote facility area that they can only see straight up, if you will, to the satellites. Current satellite technologies before Starlink had reasonable speeds, but the problem was the delay. If you hit Enter for a webpage, you might wait two or three seconds for that page to start downloading. And that delay in the Starlink system, which is a low Earth orbit satellite, is down to about 10 to 20 milliseconds, meaning very similar to what you would have with a good internet connection at home. We expect the prices to be very competitive. They are in beta now. There are beta reports coming back now. In fact, Starlink recently started hooking up a few schools that are in extremely remote areas to try to get those peoples some broadband coverage. The system is going up 60 satellites at a time. I believe they launched 180 last, this month alone. So, we expect it to be fully global in two to three years. So, that is another option for our truly rural areas. There are other community initiatives going on you may have heard about, from Google Fiber in West Des Moines to Metronet in Johnston and Urbandale. Pella has their fiber system, and Yonola has a system. There's My Fiber. So, there's a number of initiatives. And what I would tell you is these are, in essence, targeted initiatives in a certain area. And all of them are a little different. What we're not trying to do is say through the study, there's one way of doing this. What we're trying to do is expose all the options for each county, for each city. So, this study, we put together an RFP, and out in July, we had 13 companies express interest, eight actually bid. We pulled together a committee of people to review and score all the submissions. We had 18 members on our committee. In fact, you'll see in a minute, one of the people is from Marion County. We selected two finalists. An HR Green out of Cedar Rapids is our preferred vendor for many, many reasons. It's pretty much a unanimous decision. Olson came in quite a bit lower price, but they were missing some of the key pieces we felt were really important. These are the committee members that worked on our RFP committee, and Jerry Byer from Premier Corp was part of that. And one of our asks today is that the Board of Supervisors recommend one or more people that can serve on the steering committee. And you'll find out in a minute what that steering committee is going to be doing, but this is the committee that will actually be helping the consultant make decisions. Help them with decisions that need to be made and make sure that everybody is represented fairly. So, this is one of the asks today is one or more people from your community that you feel would be really, really good on this committee. We want a very large, very diverse group of people on this. So, what will the study provide us? In essence, the way HR Green says it is, it's a broadband marketplace. So, they're going to create a tool. The output will be a tool that anybody can go into, look at what providers are available, what funding is available. Because this isn't just about accessibility. It's going to be about affordability too. Not everybody has the money to either build out a system or to pay for the system. We know that there are, there's a segment of our economy and our population that does not have $100 a month for internet. And that's a problem. And it's probably a bigger problem than, you know, having access. So, this isn't just about how can we get the fastest internet. It's going to be how can we get affordable internet as well. So, that's the output goal. They're going to do it through a steering committee, data gathering, gap analysis, and developing an action plan. So, walking through that, the steering committee, my ask this morning, multiple areas. Educate our stakeholders so people like yourselves and others in your communities help align everybody together. We have almost 6,000 square miles our 10-county cover. It's a large area. We have everything from dense urban that has its own problems here in Des Moines, believe me, to extreme rural, where there just isn't anything available. In some cases, even cellular coverage is not available. They're also going to work on facilitating key decisions. So, when decisions are taken by the committee, all voices are heard. And centralize the decision-making. We don't want to drive our consultant nuts, right? And say, oh, you got to go ask 28 people their opinion and get them all to agree. That could be pretty hard. Here's the pieces of their study. They're going to validate the speed and service. This is the big effort. So, it's, if you ask all the vendors to say, what do you have available? Well, in my building in downtown Des Moines, I have gigabit internet through fiber. Does it really deliver gigabit? Depends on who you talk to in the building. You'll see this across all internet systems. They're mostly shared systems. So, while a MediaCom or CenturyLink or whoever it is says, we have, you know, 100 by 10 internet, 100 megabit down, 10 up, the average customer may get a portion of that. In fact, my daughter live here in Des Moines, we helped her a little bit with her finances, and we got her a 100 by 10 package. And that was what was guaranteed. When the installer got there, he explained to her, well, I can't give that to you, because if I do that, the entire rest of the apartment building doesn't get any internet. So, she got 30 by 5. Okay, so that's the reality. And we have to get to the reality. We can't just depend on what's stated by vendors as the best case. We have to live with what's really out there. We'll do stakeholder engagement. We're going to do a lot of community surveys. So, along with data that we can access, which there are some maps out there from the state offices, CIO, that are hopefully better than the FCC's, but they're not as robust as we need. There, we can actually buy data from a company called UCL. If you've ever used speed tests to see how fast your internet is, you're using that service, and that anonymous data is collected at a very fine point. We can buy that data. But we're going to actually survey the community. And this is going to be businesses. It's going to be individuals to find out what are they really seeing and what are they really needing. And then we're going to look across, how do we get resiliency in the system? We can't afford failure points. So, we're going to have to have multiple ways of getting to internet for people as we move forward. And to be honest, it's, this is a huge economic development issue. When we have companies coming to our towns and cities saying, we want to build here, we potentially want to locate a facility here, they not only need to know they can get great internet at their facility, but that their employees will have it. So, that in those times when people either need to work at home or we're forced to work at home, that they have what they need. So, the data gathering, regional, through the maps that the state provides, speed tests down to the zip code level, and then surveys down to the individual home level. Create a gap analysis, and this will be a portal that'll be available so anybody can pull up the information. There will be work to do community planning and create policy templates, identify applicable grants and funding. And this is a big deal. Not only is this to collect the data, but what monies can we go after? What grants are there? What options are there to fund it, whether it's state or federal? Provider engagement. Identify the gaps and develop provider interest. And sometimes we kind of have to sell these providers on serving a less dense area. And then, of course, the analysis of the impacts, the benefits, I think I'll administer it, but we will put that together. So, then coming out of this is the action plan, and this is where a lot of the value comes in, is, you know, the state maps are pretty good, all right? There's nothing wrong with them, but they're fairly high level. And the challenge is that we want to get to a point where rather than you having to rely on that other data, you're in a position as county to lead a discussion on what's needed, not reacting to someone else's data. And know that the data is derived from actual broadband users in your area. And so, it's going to provide that actual user data and their actual speeds for you. And having that data can put your county in a position of having data that you know is accurate versus, you know, opposed to having to defend someone else's data. So, we actually, you know, we just fundamentally believe having the right data will be the best way to steer the discussion on what do we do about it. And so, part of these action plans will be providing each area multiple options. And when I say area, I don't mean just your county, but the smaller town areas. What are multiple options to resolve the issues? And in the rural area, what are multiple options to get people good internet? So, that's what comes out of the action plan. And so, our goal is really, when we set out to do this is how can we get our counties to 100% coverage from an accessibility? And then how do we get to an affordability structure that allows the people that need internet to get internet? So, the cost of this is about $340,000. Partnership is contributing directly $80,000. The Metropolitan Planning Organizations is committing $40,000. We did ask the state for funding. They did decline. And so, today, we're meeting with you. In fact, we're meeting with another county today, I believe it's Jasper, at the same time. We're asking all the counties to help fund this through, on a per capita allocation, and asking for representatives on the steering committee. So, what does that look like? So, for Marion County, it would, our ask is $9,128. So far to date, Madison and Warren County have said yes. We are meeting with Jasper this morning. We have met with Polk. We believe they will agree to fund it. They were trying to see if the city of Des Moines would help them with that. They are very positive about this and have been advocates for this. So, Polk is likely in for the 134,000 you see there. If we were to get any additional grants or loans, and we are pursuing, not loans, but grants for this, we are pursuing a few, we would then lower the allocation per rod across all, per capita across all of the counties. So, that's our ask today, is for $9,128 and for a committee member. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Steve, Keisha, questions for Mike?
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. And regarding the data, you know, we can get, we can collect this data, but then actually getting a company to implement some of this? I mean, that's, where is the follow-through, I guess? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and that's part of what we'll be providing, HR Green will be providing, is making contact with vendors who have interest and trying to drive that interest. So, that's part of the work, is to make sure there's a group of vendors standing by. Doesn't mean we'll guarantee it. No one can guarantee, but we can certainly do the legwork to say, here are seven vendors that are interested in working in our 10-county area. Worked on rural, working on small town, working on mid-sized town, that type of thing.
So, my husband works for a local internet company here, and so I know, you know, he talks about fixed wireless a lot. Fixed wireless is good up for six miles line of sight. Now, we have a line of, I mean, we don't, we live in, I live in the country. We have a tower within us six miles. I would have to go on top of my garage to put a antenna to be able to reach that. And because, you know, we, we have hills around us. So, getting people to be able to put the towers, I think, in rural, the rural counties, that's, that's the difficult. You can't put up enough towers, especially, I mean, if you live in a flat area, that's one thing. And I really didn't, I said, I'm opting out. I don't want something on my garage. So, you know, I have spoke to our local, like, REC's and things like that, and said, you know, where are we at with that concept? You know? Building that, that bridge and being able to do that.
So, that's one of the reasons we brought up the NextLink, because that's exactly what they'll be doing. And the government money, that $280 million, is to build out those towers, because they fully recognize these small areas, rural areas, can't afford to build those towers out. They just can't. So, the goal is with NextLink, and that's part of the connections we'll be making, and part of the recommendations, very likely, will be, one of the, one of the recommendations will be their system. Certainly, everything continues as planned. But that's a, excuse me, I'm about to speak. I apologize. So, NextLink has received the money from the federal government to do that work, build out those towers. And in fact, has already started contacting owners of property that are, you know, things like crane elevators and water towers that they can actually access to do exactly that. And the system that they are putting in is a mesh system, meaning they don't have to run fiber optics to every tower. And I'm sure your husband's very familiar with that kind of technology. And if he would like to see some of the background, I'd be happy to give you more information on NextLink.
Steve, any questions?
Well, the only concerns I have, and I understand that we all agree that, you know, broadband would be nice in all these counties, especially to, you know, to encourage businesses to move here. But I think Mike hit it right on the head earlier. Accessibility is one thing, but affordability is another. I don't know that, and he, you know, he's exactly right. And I know a lot of people that can't afford the other $100 a month, another bill for, for internet access. And I'm not trying to diminish the importance of it, because I do believe it's needed, but it's just the affordability of it.
Well, Steve, that's a, that's a great comment. Mike, right now, I know we have Mike and the folks in Pella been working on their, their fiber optic network. I know if we talk in Knoxville, our current providers, there's a limitation to access mainly because of what Steve just raised. And that is people don't want to pay the bill, so the line doesn't get laid. So, when you're talking about hard lines, people seem to not want to pay that extra money to do that, even in some of our, what I would consider more of our affluent areas in Knoxville. So, there's a limitation. I mean, we experienced that during COVID when the schools shut down and people didn't have access to broadband, and they're trying to learn from home. So, we saw that. Is this sort of the solution for that, that, that the, the companies that lay fiber are seeing a certain amount of uptake, but not much? I mean, there's just, because of Steve's comment, there's just an economic limitation in rural Iowa that people are not going to buy these services, even people that might be more middle income or upper income?
You know, I think the, if you look at it and you get into the bigger, bigger towns and smaller cities where there is competition, you see much lower prices.
Right.
So, part of this is getting the point of competition. To Steve's point, you're absolutely right. Bearing fiber or hanging fiber is extremely expensive. And that's why some of these solutions are wireless solutions. That's why the satellite solution, it's why looking at the fixed wireless solutions is to have a lower cost point. Steve, you're right. I mean, part of the study is to find resources and funding to help the people who are lower income gain access to a longer-term solution. Because even though some of our kids are back in school now, there's requirement to do homework online, and those children still have to do their online homework. So, even after COVID settles down some, I think that, you know, to be attractive as a community, whether it's to an individual or to a company, having solid internet connections are going to be absolutely essential. So, yes, part of this study is accessibility. Part of it is affordability. Is it the solution? No. There's no one solution. I won't stand here and say there's a great solution hanging there, and we all just need to do it. It's not going to be easy, but I think having the data in front of us and having options in front of us will bring a lot of value. And people, when people say, what are we doing about this? We'll have an answer. It may not be perfect, but we'll have an answer.
Mike, my title question, you mentioned cellular as far as there being dead spots in rural areas. But cellular is definitely a competitor in the market of satellite, fixed wireless, and cable broadband. Will cellular be evaluated as far as rural connectivity? And whether broadband of any type would be feasible, or, or would people just choose, even if there's infrastructure there, choose to go cellular route for connectivity? Will that be evaluated?
You know, so? Sorry. The cellular will be part of the study. It's not going to be ignored. Cellular has certain limits, as we all know, with pricing and the amount of data you can get and the speed you can get. Certainly, we know that here in Des Moines, with the kids who do not have a permanent home and are moving from shelter to grandma to aunt, back to shelter, cellular is the only solution, because they're carrying one of those cellular hotspot devices with them. That's a part of the option. But it's, it really doesn't represent a price point for, you know, if you're, if you're consuming, you know, 500 gig a month, like some of us are here in the cities, and need that for streaming video, for Zoom calls, that type of thing. Cellular really, most cases, is not going to hold up. Now, if you're fortunate enough to sit next to a 5G tower here in downtown Des Moines, perhaps it would work well enough. So, it is one option. It will certainly be part of the study, but I don't think it's the, it's the optimal situation for a family of four all accessing internet.
So, just to, for the board, I think the kind of ultimate question is, Steve and Keisha, is it worth $9,128 to be part of a study group with the Greater Des Moines Partnership and the counties listed to explore this? To put some resources toward data gathering? Mike, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what this is. It's a data gathering project. To see if, if there are solutions to cover our more rural, our, our lower-income folks and, and provide broadband. We do know economically, we have to have it if we're going to compete. We do know that. We know from COVID, from the school standpoint, that we've entered, and that's one of the lessons learned from this, right? So, it's not that it couldn't be done without it, but people struggle when they don't have it. And businesses don't come. I mean, I, speaking in the private sector, businesses just won't come to a community that does not have access to this. Or at least your universe of options will be very limited in that regard. So, is it worth $9,100 to be part of this and see where it goes?
I got one more question. Mike, do you know why the state declined?
The answer I received was they didn't have a vehicle through which to fund it. I'll let that speak for itself. I know that they have an active grant program right now, but that grant is restricted to actually rolling out broadband. And that's not necessarily a bad idea, but it is not available to this project, because we're actually not building out a system. We're doing the analysis in front of that. And so, the current, I think, five and a half million that's available, or four and a half million available, is only for build-out. Now, I will say, if you apply for those grants, or we apply for those grants, you have to have the data to be able to apply for the grant. And that's one of the reasons we think this is important, is whether you're applying for USDA grant, whether you're applying for, you know, the Walmart Foundation grants that are out there for some of this stuff. That's where we see the value, not only for the counties, for rural areas, but even here in the more dense urban areas, which we have to have the data.
That's why I was confused, Mike, when I first started looking at this packet. You know, I'm thinking, why do we need a study when we know there's a need? But, but you've kind of identified to me as to what, what this, you know, just, just what you just said. We have to have this data in place before we can even apply for some of those grants. But I especially like the idea of part of this study being, making it affordable for people probably normally would not even try to access it.
One of the things that I.
Especially on the education side.
One of the things that I see, this is very similar to the situation we were in several years ago with the housing study. We knew there was need, but you needed the study in order to move the initiatives forward. And I think this is somewhat similar situation.
Yeah, as long as.
Keisha?
Yeah, as long as we will, you know, if the data, if we can collect the data and we actually do something with it, I think of anybody, I mean, when you're talking taxpayer dollar, that's, that's where we have to be, you know, imperative about, so.
Are you making a motion, Keisha?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
$9,128?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second.
I'm going to second that with a caveat, that I'm doing so because I do believe that it is, it is very imperative toward the moving forward to, to, you know, get businesses and such back into the county.
All right, Steve seconds it.
And round about way.
All right. Now, Mike is, let's call the question and then we'll deal with people. So Jake?
Johnner?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
Very good. All right. So as far as people, Mike, can we get back to you on that?
Yes, that would be fine. And I think you have contacts throughout, me, I'm David Moss, Sophie, there are us. It's fine. We're the two project leads for the partnership. Perfect. We will, we will do that, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I really appreciate your time.
All right, very good. Next, we have bond disclosure council engagement agreement. Allers and Cooney will talk about that. This gets us into the process for Prairie Ridge. And before we go there, want to welcome Mike Nardini. I was, yeah, Mike, city administrator, right?
That is correct.
City administrator in Pella. We have been working for a number of months, probably almost a year now, on the Prairie Ridge project. I know that construction, or at least site development is underway. We're very pleased about this and we've got a series of items here, Mike. But if you could give us an update just on where the project stands right now, and then we'll go forward.
Be happy to, Chairman Raimi, and thank you for having me here today. As Chairman Raimi stated, site development is actively underway at Prairie Ridge Development in, in Pella. And we had some good news this morning as far as the infrastructure for the development itself. The infrastructure is, developers are making very good progress on it. In fact, they think they'll have the streets, the storm sewers and sanitary sewers completed by mid-November of this year. So that's outstanding on that. They've made very good progress. In case you're wondering, when we talk about streets, that's just over a mile worth of street network that's out there. For those of you may, that may not be aware of where the Prairie Ridge Development is located is, if you were to go up to exit 40, right at the, the Pella, Pella, Highway 163, it's just southwest of, of that interchange there, that we have to actually a little bit west of that interchange. And so when we look at the streets on there, the infrastructure, they're making very good progress. The one item that we have outstanding for the development is there's going to be a need to install a lift station in there for the sanitary sewer. They're currently awaiting on some of the pumps for the lift station. They anticipate the lift station will be completed by February of this year. So again, with very short order, we believe that the infrastructure for the development is almost complete. And by that early, first quarter of 2021, we'll be complete on that. Now, as far as the item that really has some tangible value for us, when we talked about the Prairie Ridge Development, one of the discussions we had, similar to the broadband initiative we just discussed, was the need for what we would call affordable workforce housing for the development. That is the goal of the Prairie Ridge Development. Now, overall, when we talk about the development as a whole, it's roughly about 118 housing units that would be geared toward workforce housing in our community. Now, as far as the mechanics of the development are going, I'm going to share some details that the developers are pretty to that I think is very encouraging news. They've actually been able to secure two builders off the Des Moines metro area. The builders that they have for the development are Oakstone and then Sage Homes. Now, Oakstone builds about 100 houses a year up around the Des Moines metro area. Sage Homes, about 75 houses on, on an annual basis. Now, the good news for us with the infrastructure, if you recall where that stands, is the next step in the process for the infrastructure, once it's complete, is dedication to the city of Pella. We are scheduled to consider the phase one, the plan on phase one of the development at our November, late November planning and zoning commission meeting. The council is actually scheduled to adopt or accept the infrastructure for the street portion, actually in early December this year. And the phase one of the development is approximately 20 single family homes. And it will be also the townhome portion of the development, which is approximately 24 homes on that. Phase two is about 30 days behind that. So we anticipate that city council will be able to accept the phase two infrastructure, street related improvements, early January of 2021 on that. And the reason why I'm mentioning that is as soon as we're able to record those final plans, a lot of sales can be finalized for the development. And this is where we do have some good news to, to share with you this morning. As far as the initial sales on the development, we believe there will be 10 spec homes constructed, potentially yet this fall, depending on whether as soon as the phase one final plan is accepted by the city council. We have that tentatively scheduled for December, as shown this year. So they're hoping to actually start with basement installs this year. They actually have two custom homes permits on it as well. Next spring, we anticipate an additional five to six homes, along with five townhome units on it for next spring. So I think when you look at it, and now we're considering bond that matters today. The good news is, as far as the home sales, they're significantly above projections so far. And we believe we're in line for a very strong showing in 2021. The other thing that I'd like to remind supervisors on this is, if you recall during the mechanics of our development agreement, we actually had a committee that was comprised of a representative from Marion County, the city of Pella, and the developers. Sole purpose of this committee is before we're able to issue building permits for the development, we want to make sure that the development's in line with the original intent of, or the houses are in line with the original intent of the development agreement, which is geared towards workforce housing. So this committee will look before we can actually issue a building permit. The committee is going to look at the housing design, make sure that we have quality homes being constructed in our community. We're also going to ensure that we have a price point out there that we are really hitting the mark for workforce housing as well. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is with potentially 12 applications for homes, we'll need to get that committee together. Our representative from the city of Pella is going to be Councilmember Skeevout. Councilmember Skeevout is very fluent in the construction industry on it as well. And we anticipate, or we'd like to be able to work with, we anticipated contacting Jake and asking who the Marion County representative will be on that. But that's something that we foresee there will be a need to have that committee comprised within the next 30 days on as well. So overall, from the development standpoint, the takeaway this morning is, infrastructure is nearly complete. By November of this year, we believe it's going to be completed, the street portion. We're just waiting on some pumps for our lift station. The final infrastructure will be completed in early February of this next year. Home sales to this point have exceeded expectation. In fact, we anticipate issuing potentially 12 building permits this year. And so with that, Chairman Raimi, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions board supervisors may have on the Prairie Ridge Development.
Well, Mike, thank you for that update. That is very encouraging to hear the progress of the development. Steve or Keisha, do you have any questions for Mr. Nardini?
Thank you for just giving the report. I don't have any questions.
Steve?
No, I'm glad to hear that. It's good news.
It is.
That, that sounds pretty exciting, Mike. Thank you. I have no other further questions.
I think just the only comment I would make off of Mike's presentation is that remember, this is a, a little bit of a unique position for Marion County, to leverage our balance sheet to work with one of our local municipalities to help with development. And as Mike alluded to, having two significant home builders now attracted to the project through our investment in this is significant. When you think about other projects that could be leveraged across Marion County. So very excited, Mike, and you guys have done a phenomenal job working with us. And we appreciate the partnership very much. We will work on finding a person named to get to Jake, so we can have somebody on that committee when you are ready.
Well, thank you.
Very good. So that leads us to item number, item number two, which is our bond disclosure council engagement agreement. I don't know, Jake, if you or Michael want to talk about that?
Is Mike, Michael, you on?
I see his picture.
Yeah, I'm on. Yeah, this is a, this is, go ahead.
I was gonna say, actually, Mike, sorry, this one is, sorry, I'm distracted by that. The first one is bond disclosure council engagement. Allers and Cooney, Steve Nadal has been doing our work on all this stuff for you guys along the way. And this is just a formal agreement to get them online, to get him on.
So if you look on, for the board, page five, so it's pretty standard in terms of engagement agreement. Just want to point, point page five, the fees paragraph, so you get an idea of the cost of this. I think it's, given the time and what we will have to do, it's a very reasonable fee. We utilize Allers and Cooney for other services as well. They, they really work well for Marion County. Do you have any questions, Steve or Keisha? All right, hearing none, I would enter, oh, Steve, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I was just looking, looking over, but it, it's, it's right on track of what we have been talking about in the past.
Yep, yep. So if there's no questions, would entertain a motion to approve this engagement agreement?
So moved.
Beckett?
Motion in support. Jake?
McCollum? Steve?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good. Item number three is Resolution 202069. And this is authorizing an execution of the extension agreement. Marion County, City of Pella, the Pella Community School District for the TIF arrangement for Prairie Ridge. So Jake, you want to give just a little bit of background?
Yeah, so this was brought to our attention, actually, I think by the city of Pella, actually, and their council. This actually goes back to when you guys were going through your process of approving the urban renewal area and then the agreement with the city of Pella Development Agreement. During that whole conversation, it was discussed that the TIF would be a 15-year TIF. Iowa statute is 10. It can go to 15 by passing resolutions, and that was discussed at that time. The school had gone ahead and approved this, but Pella and Marion County just hadn't gone through the, the formalities of, of that extension to 15, is what I understand. So this is kind of actually going back to the beginning, to complete, to make sure that it has got authority to be a 15-year tax increment finance district.
Right.
That will be used, the increment will be used to pay off the bonds for the project.
Correct. And we had decided, we had discussed during that period of time of putting these all together when we were ready to do all the motions on bonding and everything else. So we've talked about this, Steve. It's not any, any material change from what we talked about in the past, going from 10 to 15 years as far as the TIF. There's a population requirement. It is under that population requirement. So Steve, Keisha, any questions?
No.
Nope, I have none.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Make motion, we approve Resolution 202069.
I'll second that.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
All right. Next item, we declare the public hearing open on a proposed authorization of a loan agreement not to exceed $4.9 million in general obligation capital notes issued by Marion County for essential purposes. That's critical language in this process. And this is to support the infrastructure development at Prairie Ridge. For our agreement with the city of Pella, I believe, Mike, we have to fund this by the end of January. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, right around there. I believe the development agreement says the developer cannot request reimbursement before January 1st.
That's it, okay.
So really, the key on this is as soon as all the public infrastructure is completed and dedicated to the city of Pella, legally, that will occur sometime in the month of January, early February of 2021.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Steve or Keisha, Michael, anything you want to add on this one? I, maybe talk a little bit about rates right now.
Yeah, sure. I'd happy to do that. Right now, we have this structured as a, as a 15-year obligation. We've talked about that in the past. The legal limit would be 20 years for this type of financing, but the 15 is what we've analyzed. So that's what we're planning on unless the board has a different indication. And that's aligning with some of the TIF repayments based on our projections. Interest rates are a bit lower than what we talked about during the planning process in the winter. We know the impact was relatively minor on, on property taxes. And that's even assuming no TIF revenues are able to support this. So again, just taking a very conservative look. On the 15-year structure, interest rates right now are probably going to be between 1.75 and 1.9% based on the structure of the county's debt. There's basically three factors I would assume here. One, we'll have the rating back from Moody's Investor Service on Thursday. That's expected to be in the AA category. AA2 versus AA3 will be a few basis points difference. The other factor right now that we'd be looking at is going to be any potential impact from the election. Pricing of the bond would be, would be scheduled for November 10th. Assuming things run smoothly next week, we don't see that as an issue. If for some reason we have some dislocation in the capital markets, that would preclude that. We'd come back with some feedback for you on the 10th and, and work through the timeline accordingly. But that's probably more than you wanted. I've got some additional information if you'd like, Mark, but I thought I'd pause there for the board's feedback.
No, I appreciate that, Michael. Steve or Keisha, any questions for Michael on this?
No. Michael, you'll then, on Thursday, when we find that out, you'll be sending out an email or how will that come to us on our rating?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a, Moody's right now, because they're so busy, is not leaving a whole lot to the emails. So they actually scheduled a brief five-minute call with us at noon on Thursday. So we'll get that feedback and there will be two items from them. One that we'll get first is the press release that they put out. When we have that, you know, and that goes to Jake or myself. And, and, you know, I know Jake's got some other things on his plate this week. So I'm more than happy to forward that around for you to see that. And then that'll be followed shortly thereafter by the full rating report from Moody's.
Thank you, Michael.
Very good. Excellent. Again, I think this is a very bold and unique step. I don't want to use the word innovative because I don't like it. But I think it takes Marion County into a different, the role of the supervisors into a different position. Partnering with our municipalities, recognizing, much like we talked about broadband, it's not that dissimilar. And Mike with Nardini was very accurate. We had a workforce housing study, Carla worked on that, where we saw the need. So we know the, there will be tax implications to our residents. We've been very open and talking about all those things. We will again have more discussions on that as we go forward. But this is important for the future of our county when we think of jobs and overall growth economically. We have to compete, and we're taking this upon ourselves to, to drive that here in Marion County. So an important step as a board, I believe, when we, when we do this. With that, is there a motion on this resolution?
We have to close the public hearing.
That's right. That's the next one. Sorry. I'm skipping ahead. Are there any comments from the public?
Yeah.
I gave that speech. It was so good.
Right?
George. That entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make motion, we close the public hearing.
Second? Johnner?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Now I get to do my, think of everything I just said and we'll do it with this resolution. Resolution 2020-70 is the resolution approving this, these obligation notes. Is there a motion?
Make motion, we approve Resolution 202070.
Second? McCollum?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Good. Item number six is 202071. This is the resolution approving our official statement. Jake?
I can sure, the official statement is a document that's prepared when the issuance of the bonds. And, you know, Michael may be able to give a little bit more detail on that. It's a, it's an in-depth thorough document that's prepared with all, based off of information from Marion County for people interested in purchasing the bonds to understand who we are and what we are. Is that close, Michael?
Yeah, that's, that's spot on, Jake. And I know we've spent some time working with staff assembling that, and it's been circulated for review. The, the main body of that document is relatively standard for a county in Iowa issuing bonds backed by the general obligation pledge with just the date dollars and the specific name for Marion County, along with any unique county risk. The appendices to that are the particular information. So in addition to the audit, we include a variety of tables. Most of them are compiled from publicly available sources like the State Department of Management, others from county staff, just to, hey, where's our financial position, our tax base, population, industry, et cetera. So we've worked to compile that, and this is just a step to basically share, hey, we've got everything queued up and we're ready to go market the bonds. This is our marketing material, if it were, for the securities market or investors that will be purchasing the county's notes.
Very good, thank you, Michael. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2020-71.
All right, I'll second that.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. Next, we'll declare this public hearing open. In conjunction with this action in support of the Prairie Ridge development, we also had discussed the potential of looking at our remaining LEC financing exposure. It's 1.45 million of general obligation notes. Those had been refinanced some time ago, but with interest rates being what they are, it might be an opportunity to shave a few points off of that, that repayment schedule. So, Michael, maybe, it's not something we have to do, but it's something that could be prudent to do in the current climate. So, Michael, if you want to add a little color to that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I I would, I would say it's always a good idea, if you're holding the public hearings anyway, to just follow through on this step. We probably wouldn't be pursuing this independent of the Prairie Ridge financing, even with the interest rates where they are. While I would recommend that the county follow through on holding this public hearing, at this time, we wouldn't expect following through on the refinancing later this month, just based on where current interest rates are. That being said, with the potential volatility that could come out of news in the next couple weeks, might might as well go through with the process here. It always reserves the right for us to take action out of.
I think we lost you, Michael, that's all right. I I think the the gist of it is, go through this process, go public hearing, and the passage of the resolution. We do not have to act on that. It's only.
Correct.
Only if conditions are favorable from a financial perspective to do that. So that's why these next two items are on the agenda, to to take those actions. Fair, Michael?
That's exactly right, sir.
All right, very good. So with that, this public hearing portion, are there any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Which leads us to item number eight, which is Resolution 2020-72. Given what Michael just described, what I just talked about, this gives us the ability to take action if we need to on these notes, but we do not have to. It's not a requirement, good to go through this step. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2020-72.
All right, I'll second. Steve, second that, very good.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, item, Resolution 2020-73 is approving our bond disclosure policy, which we need to have in place for this and other future transactions. I don't, Michael, this is predominantly from an SEC perspective and compliance perspective on issuance of those bonds. Jake, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
That's right, that's right, yeah. It's been eight years since the county entered the securities market. There's been some changes and updating to some of the securities laws for ongoing disclosure. You just approved the offering document that will be used at the time of marketing the bonds. Investors also expect at least annual reporting of the county's financial circumstances. So in addition to the audit, we'll provide some ongoing disclosures to those investors through the federal portal. With that, it's good to get your disclosure policy aligned with the current standards each time you issue, and Holors has put this together to make sure that's updated for this purpose.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2020-73.
Very good.
Second.
Motion in support.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
2020-74, again, very similar to what we just talked about previously, but as we think about reporting requirements, anything from an IRS, SEC perspective, post issuance impacts of COVID on our operation, making sure that we accurately track and report those items, that's where this policy comes into play. Michael, is that, I'm not trying to be too brief, but is that fair?
No, that's that's right. This is just a little bit more broad. What we're doing here is saying, in addition to the disclosures we're making to investors that we just covered on the last item, this is about the county following through to make sure, hey, we're issuing tax exempt bonds, we're going to track and record how those proceeds are spent once they're deposited in December, so that it's clear that we've doing everything by the book from federal securities law to keep these as tax exempt. Additionally, there's updating, as we talked about, it's been eight years since the county was in the bond market, just trying to get these updated to the latest and greatest, and Holors has prepared these on your behalf.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2020-74.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much for all of that. We have a special event permit application for Thrive's Living Windows. Is there anybody representing Living Windows?
Uh, excuse me, Mark.
Uh, it'd be Tyler.
Tyler.
I sit on the Thrive board, although I'm not in charge of Living Windows, I said I would represent Thrive today.
Okay.
So, yeah, our living windows will look a little bit different this year. They're not encouraging folks to be downtown on the square. There will be a decorated courthouse lawn, the trees will have lights on them, there will be the tree that 3M puts up on the south lawn, and there will be virtual tree lighting. Santa Claus will arrive upon a fire truck around 5:45. The high school choir will be social distance and sing a few songs for the virtual tree lighting. Santa will light the tree, and then he'll move on to what we're calling Santa stops at the bus stops throughout town, where there'll be volunteers encouraging social distancing with goodie bags for kids. And then, along with living, so that, for the permit, that's about the extent of it. We're going to decorate with lights and the tree and use some electricity, and that's about it. So there will not be crowds of people on the square or on the courthouse lawn. So, Living Windows will be doing a few other things, a rethought and decorating, window decorating contest for local businesses, and then a new this year would be a drive-through lighted Christmas display at Marion County Park.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
So Santa's Last Stop, that evening will be a teaser, virtual teaser of the lighted drive-through display, which will start the following evening.
All right, okay.
All right. Any questions for Tyler?
I don't have any.
All right, is there a motion to approve the special event application?
Make motion to approve the Thrive application for Living Windows.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, next we have Resolution 2020-67, an agreement for a living roadway trust fund grant.
Yep.
What is this?
Uh, so, almost every year, we apply for a living roadway trust fund grant for either seed or materials or equipment. Our IRVM building has been funded by a living roadway trust fund grant as well. So, you know, last year, we purchased a sprayer and a spray truck, $25,000 worth of grants. This year, we're replacing our batwing mower that mows the highway shoulders. So the grant is for $10,000 towards the purchase of a new batwing mower, which we'll be trading in, and so I recommend approval.
Okay.
Any questions for Tyler?
I don't have any.
I have none.
We have been approved for the $10,000.
Okay. Very good. Steve?
I think he said he didn't have any.
No, I'm I'm okay with it.
All right, is that a motion to approve, Steve?
If I'm able to approve Resolution 2020-67?
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, 2020-68, bridge inspection contract for 2020-21.
So, over the last couple of years, you've heard me say that we're going to look at different options in the future regarding our bridge inspection. So I'd like to preface this by saying, we have had no performance issues or no professional issues with our current bridge inspecting consultant. This is simply, we went out for RFPs simply because, you know, we we wanted to see what else was out there and if there was a better price, and I professionally felt like it was maybe in the county's best interest to get a different consultant's eyes on our 200 bridges occasionally. We have been with our current bridge inspection consultant since 1984. There was an agreement in place in 1984, and everything since has been a supplemental agreement every two years. So we we did that, we had about six consultants interested, only three submitted, returned something. Others basically called and said, there's no way we'll be competitive. And then there were some that submitted that were more than double what we're paying. So my recommendation, with the information I provided you in your packet, would be to go with a different consultant, which is for the baseline work that was laid out in the RFP, which is standard for most counties, was significantly cheaper per bridge to inspect, but would also get us, you know, a different set of eyes on things. And for me, I guess my professional recommendation would be to go for, let's hurt my goal, this year, or actually, it would be a two-year inspection contract. And then we would see after that.
Okay. Fair enough. Keisha, Steve, any questions for Tyler on that?
I don't.
No, I I think it's probably a good idea, Tyler. I mean, it it doesn't hurt to have another set eye every once in a while on on certain things.
Yeah, and again, no issues, just, you know, it was simply a decision of mine to look at other options and, and, you know, just make sure that we're, we're getting, you know, we're not overdoing or underdoing in any way, which I don't believe that we are, but just kind of a checks and balances.
Sure.
Is the cost similar then? Or you said it was maybe a little bit, but I didn't know.
It's less for the routine bridge inspections, so about 20% less. And then with all our inspection contracts, there are some time and material items for for the non-typical bridge inspections, you know, on the Des Moines River Bridge, we have to have a diver occasionally or a special equipment to review certain types of bridges. All that's based on a time and material, or certain items like a rating, you know, if this legislator passes a new load rating, new truck that we have to load rate for, then those will be on a per-bridge rate that was included in that proposal. All right.
Very good, is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion, we.
I'm able to approve Resolution 2020-68.
I'll second.
All right, motion in support.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Rick, you're up. We had a discussion last, in our last meeting, about potentially the landfill using a generator from the VA. We threw out a price. It was like 1.6 million.
Yeah, sure.
Is it close?
Not even. Did you follow through on your end? Is it okay for the county to sell said generator or transfer that generator to?
Yeah, yeah, so, so it it is, have to have the right agreements in place and do some of those, as long as it doesn't reach a public bidding threshold. And we're not talking about a price that reaches that.
No.
That threshold.
I did take the the information back to my board, and they would prefer that it would simply be transferred, but they did authorize me up to a fairly low amount. You're looking at a machine that, it it's a great machine, I truly believe it is, but I think it's a 1979 model, and there's no warranties, there's no, once we reach that threshold where you can buy a new one, get it working, put it in, it really doesn't become a a great idea. But they did allow me up to a few thousand dollars to see what you would take for that particular machine, and if it's within that, then yeah, we we can make this happen. They gave me a limit, though, of five, and my best cost estimate was 83,000 total cost to the agency to get this thing transferred and put into place with no funds being exchanged. So I know my limit's five, but I'd love to offer you three, just to come out to a nice even around $85,000 for it, but the offer is out there, whatever the county would like to see brought in for it. We'd like to take that piece of equipment and put it into use. I think it will benefit the citizens of Marion County in the fact that it helps the landfill stay with a nice backup generator. It's not like we've really had too many issues where there is a potential hazard to the environment if we lose all power out there.
Sure.
And so we'd like to have a system in place where that potential hazard is eliminated with a backup generator.
Right, sure.
That's what my board offered me to, authorized me to offer, and it is up to the county whether you would like to accept that offer.
Steve, Keisha?
Well, I think, you know, I think we have to be, like I told Rick, I said on that board also, and like I told him, we have to be very cognate of of getting some return on the investment for the other taxpayers in the county also with that property. So, you know, I I'm I'm willing to accept, you know, whatever offer you guys wish to agree upon. Hello?
Cricket's chirping.
I, so, Steve, yeah, I appreciate that. I think that it's good to make use of that equipment, it's just sitting there and has sat there for over a decade.
Yeah.
Or longer. So, how's three sound?
Sounds great, we'll do it.
Anybody for three?
I'm fine with that, I mean, at least, we're getting at least some return in in the landfill and citizens, in the landfill aspect, at least they're getting, getting some good out of that equipment, it's better than sitting there doing nothing.
It is a good piece of equipment, it is 41 years old, but it's still a very good piece of equipment, only got 500 hours on it.
Yeah.
One of the backup members of my board, used to be the man in charge of servicing and maintaining all that equipment out of the VA, so I've had some oral history on it as well.
Okay, good.
We'd love to enter into the agreement for $3,000.
All right, with that, anybody want to make a motion to dispose of a generator to the landfill for $3,000?
So moved.
Second.
The only question I have before approval is, do you want me to write up a bill of sale, or is that something you want to handle yourself on this?
Uh, why don't we do that? Rick, we'll do that.
We got to get from legal counsel, yeah.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, Rick, thank you.
Thank you.
Drive a hard bargain.
We appreciate all your support of the landfill in this county, it does serve a good purpose.
Thank you. All right, we've got a couple other items here. A 2020 Weed Commissioner Report.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Phil, Phil Bernike is, acts as the county's commissioner, so this is an annual thing. be the 2020 weed commissioner report, and I don't want to speak, I don't think he was going to be on, and so this is just his annual report of the activities that he had done. I believe he also included, and I've been instructed, if you guys approve this, to send it to the state by the end of the month.
Right.
He also just gave a activity report, and then there is the 2021 weed commissioner certification form that also needs to go up to the Department of Ag.
Right.
Department of Ag.
So, it was in your packet. Are any questions on the 2020 report, we're taking in two separate items here?
No, I don't.
All right. If there are no questions, I would entertain motion to accept and receive the report.
So moved.
Second. Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
And the second item would be authorization to send the certification form for the weed commissioner to the state.
So moved.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Next item, updates. This is John.
Couple updates before we get to the slides real quick. I wanted to make sure, Kim, and you guys both know, in regards to impact, we had a meeting, status quo, as of, they're still working from home offices. They will do that and probably until next spring, and then they will decide by September of '21 about the building in Marion County. So, I did ask that last meeting. Pella Planning and Zoning, we met last night, they advised, they approved the new advised 208E agreement, so we're going forth with that. KOK is also planning to construct another building in Pella, so building, 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 I mean, there's a lot, you know, lately's continuing, and always something moving. Before, I wanted to talk a little bit, last meeting, we, I did high level of our taxes. This time, I wanted to bring up again our taxes, and then regarding our property taxes, and let's just break it down a little bit in regarding the cities and then our rural. So, the first slide up there is the city of Knoxville, and I do think that we need to look at this, and I thought, I wanted to make sure that people understood. So, on the Knoxville, city of Knoxville, your property taxes, 42.9 is the number one, goes to the city, and then the school, and then county, right? So, on that first one, and then we look at the city of Pella for property taxes, the schools is number one, city is number two, and county is three. So, that is the breakout when it comes to property tax for your two largest cities in the county. Then I went down and we did rural. So, both Knoxville and Pella, because of the school districts being the largest, I picked those, I didn't want to do throughout the whole county, but school is number one, county is number two, and then rural supplement would be number three, if that makes sense. And then we go to the last slide, and the city of Pleasantville, city of Melchardalis, and then the city of Bussy, the schools are number one, cities are number two, and county is number three. So, when you talked last time, Mark, we did a little bit about how county is typically third in line. So, I just wanted to show that it's very important that we continue as a county and to the taxpayers of the county, that they must get involved. You can see how your property tax dollars are divided. It's important that you, you know, know the school's budgets, you know your city budget, and you know your county budget. Get involved. Come to those meetings. Ask questions, so.
Very good.
Yeah, so we're going to continue. If anybody has anything that they would like to ask, I don't know if the citizens, I don't know if anybody in the county has further questions, maybe the, I don't know if the assessor wants to, anything that she would like to, us to share, but just, I want to educate people.
Good. Excellent, Keisha. Very good. Probably make this a YouTube Board of Supervisor update as well, I'm only coming up, maybe Friday. All right? Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Excellent. Excellent work. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, them were very informative slides, Keisha. Thank you very much.
No problem. Do you have any updates?
Steve, any updates for you?
Yeah, I'm going to go take a nap.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Have a good nap, too. Now, I hope you're doing okay. Hope your wife is doing okay as well.
Yeah, she's hanging in there.
All right, good. Well, just a couple things for me, and then we can wrap this up. For Steve and Keisha, actually Jake, you as well, I'd like to propose either November 9th or 10th at 5:00 PM for joint meeting with city of Knoxville to have our confluence discussion. This will be a very, I think, a very positive, very robust discussion on the three plans that we'll put together. I have asked Confluence for the financial analysis for those plans, to circulate those as well prior to this meeting. Remember, the finance, these are high-level plans, and the financial analysis corresponding to those plans is really, what would the projected property tax impacts be for each of those respective plans? And it's going to be high-level, again, lots of variance because of depending on how we choose final development, but it at least will give us a benchmark to work with. So, look at your schedule, Steve, Keisha, November 9th or 10th, 5:00 PM. I have also told Aaron and Brian to communicate this to council.
Well, I will be, I will be tending for November 10th, at least in person, Mark, because that's the magical date, public health has dated for me.
Okay, I couldn't remember which day it was, Steve, so that's why I put them both out there, so. All right, so think about that, and I'll let you know what Knoxville comes back with as well. Second.
Okay.
Second item, we have completed the RFP process for the two buildings. We will have a formal communication drafted by our consultant, Glenn Lyons, but we're not going to accept any of the proposals. They all wanted some type of tax support in order to do this, and I was very pleased with the presentations and what we did. Chris, great job taking everybody through the properties, but because of the additional tax support, uses of our brownfield tax credits, those things, we need that for us for when we do that. We can't give and cede that to somebody else. We will be working on a document to get to shipo, basically confirming we have fulfilled our obligations under that portion of the agreement, so that will check another significant box regarding the VA. I've had discussions with Ryan and Aaron and our consultant on that. Last is to begin to think about the reopening of our courthouse and to set a date for that. Like to have, at least from a Board of Supervisor perspective, some type of reopening process after Chris goes through it, make sure everything's working the way it's supposed to, doors open, elevators go up and down, all of those good things. So, be thinking about that, and Chris, once you get a chance to go through it, maybe come back with a couple suggested dates on what that reopening date will be.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah?
I would like to add to that, that no matter what the date is, you know, if we plan on making a move in one day, I would, you know, realistically, I would hope people would think that we probably wouldn't be open completely for business the next day.
So, two issues here, Steve. Our move date, so what I'm thinking about here is an opportunity to really cut the ribbon again on the courthouse. So, we'll move, we'll set a moved schedule, Chris will do that with county officers, and I do think we need to make sure the public understands that if we're doing it all in one day, we're not going to be open for business, and it will be post-election, so there will be no disruptions there.
Realistically, yes, that's my thought.
Yeah, yeah, so, but then we'll set a date for us to really have kind of a grand opening.
Correct.
Separate from that. Okay? All right. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Look at everybody.
Thank you.